We will call to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council tonight. We always wait right until 6:30 or I do to start because it's being broadcast. We welcome you all here. We know that we have a folk warrant present for everyone here. We will begin by having an opening ceremony. Councilman Rushton will present that.
Thank you, Mayor. And one of my heroes and some that I considered a mentor and a good friend was, and was a good friend to all of us, was Councilmember Carolyn Burt, who ably served this city for over 16 years representing District One. On my first council meeting in a snowy January night similar to tonight, she read this poem and presented it to me. And so, as the new council member, and so I thought it might be fitting tonight in Carolyn's memory and her honor to share this poem with all of the council, but especially our two new council members. And it's entitled "Changing." And it reads, "Things are always changing, every atom in the universe. And we as humans always struggle to put these changes in reverse. We build walls against the oceans and build fires against the cold. We build monuments to long-gone friends and relatives so their memory we can hold. We in our ignorance don't take to change too well, yet we stand in awe of the blessings from our Father that these changes can foretell. We notice the bee busy from flower to tree, giving us honey and many fruits to eat. How the cold and snow of winter prepares the earth to blossom at our feet. As flower bud unfolds to achieve its radiant glory, new enthusiastic council members bring exciting growth to our city's continuing story. Welcome to our budget, our ordinances and resolutions, our PUDs and RDAs and all of our many meetings. We know how very hard you've worked in order to receive these heartfelt greetings. We always welcome one another with warm smiles and hearty handshakes each time we meet to sit. We hope you feel as we do that you're going to be a perfect fit." Carolyn Burt, would you rise to recite the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Don't see any Boy Scout troops here, so we'll go right to the council for discussion and action on the minutes. On January 21st, Councilman Northphill.
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of our regular meeting, January 21st, 2014.
We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion to this motion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a very special part of our meeting this evening. We have Chief Brian Roberts here with us from the Draper City Police Department. If you would like to come up and take the time, and you're welcome to introduce that fine gentleman with you as well, so we can recognize and have them on our record.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for having us here this evening. Joining me is Sergeant Chad Carpenter with the Draper City Police Department. What brings me here this evening is really gratitude. And I think, as you all know, on September 1st, 2013, the Draper Police Department lost one of its own. Sergeant Derek Johnson was shot and killed in the line of duty. Tragically, where the state of Utah is in that same environment right now with, again, another tragedy that's confronting the state. With Sergeant Ride, the Utah County Sheriff's Department, and of course, our, all our best wishes and prayers and thoughts go out to him, the agency, his family, his wife, his children, and all of those, we know how they are suffering. The reason why I'm here tonight is to give special recognition to your police department. And I can tell you that your police department, being led by Chief Russo, was exceptional during the time that we really needed him. And I'm talking about the funeral services for Sergeant Johnson. And to have the event here, the viewing and the services at the Maverick Center, and the coordination that that took. Your Police Department, and specifically, some of the staff members of the Police Department, and I'll mention Deputy Chiefs Nita Schrimer and Deputy Chief Powell, were exceptional. And we're so grateful for the professionalism, the care, the understanding, and all those attributes that are so needed in these times of crisis were there for us and for the families of Derek Johnson. So, we do have something for Chief Russo. I'd like to present it to him. And what we have here is a shadow box for a wall. And on the top of it, there's a plate that reads Sergeant Derek Johnson, Draper City Police Department, end of watch, September 1st, 2013. We have a picture of Sergeant Johnson next to his patrol vehicle, a Draper City patch. But most importantly, you'll notice a casing here from a weapon. And that is one of the casings that was used in a 21-gun salute that honored Sergeant Johnson that day at the cemetery. On the below inscription, it reads, "West Valley Police Department, on behalf of the men and women of the Draper City Police Department, we offer our sincere gratitude for your care and professionalism in honoring Sergeant Derek Johnson." As a keepsake, we present you with a casing from the 21-gun salute. Brian Roberts, Chief of Police. And I'm here to present that to your Chief, Chief Russo. Mayor, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments you might have.
I believe I speak on behalf of the council in thanking you for coming, and also our heartfelt appreciation of those who are willing to put themselves into these jobs where there is the possibility of danger and even death. They are very special individuals. We appreciate them. We know our own police department are very close to our hearts. Thank you for your representation. And I don't know the protocol here, but if it's permissible with the council, I think that standing for a brief moment of silence on behalf of this fallen officer and our new one that just happened and those others would be appropriate.
Thank you, and thank you, council members, and thank you for your service.
Next, we go to our public comment period. We do have some public comment. Mr. Mike Markham, and if you would come forward, you're only limited, well, there are a number of limitations, but I assume you won't take more than five minutes.
I hope not. You new folks, you'll get to know me, I promise, if you all understand me. Yesterday, listening to the radio, one of my pet peeves of the news media around here once again announced a high-speed chase and gave the address of Second West and 50th South, which I believe that is Murray. The news media likes, in other areas, they like to use a street address when there's a crime, but when the crime happens in West Valley, they like to say West Valley. They don't give the address. I don't know if there's anybody here that can change that. I know I spoke with Mr. Pyle about that. I don't know how we'll get around it, but I think we continue to get dealt dirt from the news media. I don't know how to change it. There's nobody here to maybe put an article in that. When they did call me, the newspaper here a while back, when we had all of our police problems, they wanted to interview me and probably try to dig up some dirt about our police department, and I declined. I told them I'd never had a problem with the police department. So, we need to work with the news media. Another issue that I sat through at the council meeting last week on parks and recreation, when the figure was given, I think it was $38,000 was spent for paint, for graffiti removal. That's too much. What do we do if we catch a graffitier? What's the fine? What's the penalty? Do we make that kid and his parents stand out there and remove that graffiti, or do we slap his hands and send him on his way? I'm not even quite that kind. I think we need to snip off the tip of his finger so that he's rampant and we know that's the finger he used in the graffiti. But I think we need to get parent involvement in our graffiti issues. Another note I made here is on code enforcement, when Elaine was spoke up and was talking about that. We've had some codes go 90 days before they're actually pounded on, before the code enforcement officer really leans on it. The problem is taking care of 90 days is way too long. That's pretty much the summer season. I think we need to clamp down on that kind of stuff. We talked about, we were just told about a survey that's going to go out with the Police Department, how we want the Police Department to, how the Police Department treated a citizen when they went out on a call. I can relate a funny incident with you that upon, I believe it is King Arthur and Winchester, which Winchester being the American Express cut through. There's been a four-way sign, stop sign, put in that intersection. Because people were going through there really fast, West Valley City, for some reason, they liked to at that four-way stop, place an officer to monitor that stop sign. I never see anybody monitoring the red lights that are being run, but they monitor the stop sign in the middle of the subdivision. And I come in, he went day with my wife, she says, "Oh, well, yeah, I got a ticket there with me." Which I thought was, you know, okay, you rolled the stop sign, but she, because there was three of them, my wife asked the officer why he picked her out of the three. His comment was, "You were the easiest one to catch." That is not a comment that should have came from the police officer, as you were the easiest. I hope we don't have officers taking the easy way out. You know, she rolled the sign, she should have got the ticket, maybe a warning, but I would like to ask that maybe Chief Russo back there try to get some traffic issues going on, our red light issues around here. And I don't mean we have to get the guys that enter that are on yellow, we could just get the ones that enter on red. 4100 South, 2700 West, I know that's a shared intersection with Taylorsville, but I see that red light being run all the time, and we have horrific crashes there. We're very easy to do. We monitor, we have two, in the summertime, we have two motorcycle police officers that's always parked in the shade up by the driver's license place just north of the Holiday Oil site and people for speeding. I would like to see them a little bit farther north catching the people that's running the red lights. I think those red lights being run at 40 miles an hour are a whole lot more dangerous than the stop signs being rolled in the middle of the suffocation. You know, and I don't know if we can do anything that with the shortage we have on police Councilman Rushton mentioned it a little while ago, that he got a phone call from a guy wanting more bike lanes. When the bicycle peddlers start paying for the white paint to paint their lines and pay taxes on their bicycles like we pay on our cars, I think we can pay them some attention. But they don't pay anything to use those streets on their bicycles. And they always like to say, "Well, when I'm riding my bicycle, I'm not driving my car." Well, when I'm driving my car, my truck is home in the driveway, or my truck might, you know, or vice versa. So, that doesn't, that doesn't weigh with me. Then we heard about all of the car thefts, and I don't know if this, and maybe I'm overstepping my bounds as a citizen of the city, but I would kind of like to know what kind of cars and the locations they're being stolen from. Are they Hondas? Are they being stolen from each other to replace the parts of the rice rockets that they built? I think we could go into a lot of depth on the type of cars that are being stolen, find out where they're coming from. I guess that's it. It's too bad I'm the only citizen here, although one more that is interested enough in the city to say anything and do anything. So, you'll probably see some articles in the public forum slamming the West Valley citizens for not getting involved and sitting around and complaining. I hear a lot of complaints in restaurants, barber shops, about what's going on in West Valley City, but nobody shows up. What was our percentage of voter participation in this last go-around, Jerry? Last time it was 6%?
We were at 14, 15, if I remember.
At least voter participation was up, but, you know, 14% of registered voters voted. That's, you know, what percentage of the population voted? It's not registered. We need to get people involved with the city and watch what's going on and pay attention. So, you know, and I will write some articles, putting my name in the paper, Mike Markham. So, I will defend the city because I don't really have a whole lot of problems with the city. I think the city's done a pretty good job. As Nicole knows, I disagree with some of the development things and public money's payout plan. That's okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That was the only person who had signed up to speak, so we will go from public comments now. City manager, any comments?
No, I think I'm good for the evening, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. To the city council then, for any comments. Seeing none, we will move onward. At this part, I would mention that those items that we will be addressing as a city council, for those listening in, all of these were studied and discussed in our study session last week. So, they are not new here, but are coming here for the final review, discussion, comment, and action. We have, we now are going, let's see, we will accept public input regarding application SV-7-2013 filed by UDOT requesting to vacate a portion of 6,400 West, and we have it here in the back, from approximately 5,185 South to 5,400 South. Before we actually get to the, any public comment, Mr. Pyle, do you have any comments on this or introduction that you would like to share, remembering our audience that it's not here?
Yes, sir, thank you. Maybe I can just real briefly describe this, and in fact, the second public hearing, which you'll be hearing here in a moment, commentary on potentially. These are actions that are taken with UDOT in conjunction with the Mountain View Corridor project.
All right. Then we will officially now hear from the public, accept public input. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we will close public comment and come back to the council for action or discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Rushton.
I would move that we approve ordinance 1412 vacating this portion of 6,400 West.
The motion is properly before us. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. The motion is now before us. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none. For those listening in, ordinance number 1412 is our reference to application number SV-7-2013. So, for those who don't have an agenda, they are related. Seeing no further discussion, any last comments? We'll place it for a vote. All in favor of the motion to approve this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. We will now move to the next application, SV-6-2013, very similar, filed by UDOT, vacating a portion of Westridge Boulevard located south of Double Eagle Circle, 4790 South. And the same here, Mr. Pyle, any comments?
No further, thank you, sir.
This is also with the Mountain View Corridor, or close to it. Then we will open the public input for this particular application. Anyone here to discuss this or make comments on it? Seeing none, since there are few in attendance here, we will close the public input portion and come back to the council for further discussion or action.
I move for the approval, application number SV-6-2013, which is one of the six number 14-13.
We have a motion before us, and do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion to the motion to approve this particular ordinance, number 14-13, seeing none. This ordinance relates, as Mr. Hunt noted, is the same on those two. So, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Those were easy ones. So now, we go to resolutions. We have resolution number 14-19, a right-of-way agreement. And Mr. Pyle will turn to you to introduce this and any background information for the public.
Thank you, sir. So, as you mentioned, these are right-of-way agreements that would be adopted by resolution. They also include transfer of property through warranty deeds, a storm drainage easement, and a temporary construction easement. These, or this project is in accordance with the 6,400 West Extension Project, which we are currently underway for. Normally, this type of a resolution would be seen on our consent agenda, but because of the amount of funds that are involved in the acquisition of the right-of-way, we are taking the trouble and the action to consider these individually, sir. And there are, the fiscal impact of this would be $80,200 in state funds.
To the council, any discussion or comment or action?
Mayor, move for approval of resolution 14-19 authorize the city to enter to a right-of-way agreement.
We have the motion before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Then the motion is properly before us. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we will place it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. Now we will go to resolution 1420, a right-of-way agreement again. Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, sir. This resolution is also part of the 6,400 West Extension Project, also the exact same type of scenario where we're looking at a right-of-way agreement, a temporary construction easement, and a special warranty deed. Once again, these funds also come from money granted to us by the state in the amount of $39,050.
Thank you for that introduction. To the council then, any discussion or action?
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 14-20.
We have a motion to approve this resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. The motion is properly before us. Any discussion to the motion to approve resolution 14-20? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. Now we are to item 10 on our agenda. We have application SD to 2013, and a request to dedicate a portion of 6,400 West. Mr. Pyle, if you could clarify this and how it is different from our previous action.
Thank you, sir. So, yes, this is a dedication plat as opposed to a vacation plat, which requires, as we just went through a public hearing, this does not require that, that level of consideration, but it is in conjunction with UDOT that we're, we bring this application before you as well.
Thank you. Then to the committee for action or discussion.
So, this allows the city to take care of this piece of road, is that what that?
Yes, sir, yes.
Mayor, I move for approval of application number SD-2-2013.
Second.
We have a motion before us and a second. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Now we will do a very similar one for application SD-3-2013 from UDOT, and this is in relationship to the Westridge Boulevard. Mr. Pyle.
Yes, sir. So, the only difference in this particular item is, as you can see by the illustration up on the screens, the particular portion of road.
This is Westridge Boulevard as it runs behind USANA Amphitheater and down to, that would be 5,400 South. Okay, then to the committee for discussion or action.
I would move for approval of application SD-3-2013.
We have a motion to approve this application. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. The motion is properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now to the consent agenda. And I use my notes to make sure I'm staying on track. Then with this, we have four items on our consent agenda. I believe we typically do these as a group unless the council wants to hear anything separately. So, Mr. Pyle, would you please introduce these four different resolutions?
You bet, sir. So, as you mentioned, these are usually considered as a group, and what we have before us tonight are two quitclaim deeds, a storm drainage easement application, and then accepting a public sidewalk lighting utility easement.
And that was pretty brief. For those listening in, this is for property located at 2856 South 5600 West for the quitclaim deed and the public sidewalk lighting utility easement. The storm drainage easement is at 2851 South Redwood Road, and then the quitclaim deed for 2,200 South located east of Redwood Road. So, then to the council for discussion and/or action.
Mayor, I'll move approval of the four items of the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second. So, resolutions 14-21, 14-22, 14-23, and 14-24 have been moved for approval and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. I am unaware of any need for an executive session. We have none. With that then, before I entertain the motion to adjourn, we will be holding additional meetings immediately following this one. So, those listening in, please stay tuned, hopefully. And a motion to adjourn would be in order.
It's a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned from our regular city council meeting.
Call to order the redevelopment agency of West Valley City. We've had our opening ceremony, and roll call indicates that all are present. We have the minutes of the January 7, 2014, regular meetings that need to be approved. Any discussion or motion?
I'll move for approval of the January 7, 2014 meeting.
I have a motion.
Second.
A motion, second. Any discussion to that? Call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Any communications, sir?
No, sir. Thank you.
Any reports?
No.
We have one item of new business, and that's the election of new officers for the redevelopment agency. And I will open this for elections for new chairperson and vice-chairperson.
Mr. Chair, I move that Cory Rushden be elected the redevelopment agency chair by acclamation.
Have a motion?
I second it.
A second. And just for those that are here, there's a... The city recorder has generously put a list of rotation for each of us to serve on these committees, and typically, we just follow those rotations unless Cory decides we want to do something else.
Nevertheless, Mr. Chair, we won't elect anybody that's not qualified, able, and ready to fulfill these responsibilities.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have elections for vice-chair.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we elect Karen Lang as vice-chair of the redevelopment agency by acclamation.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second. Mrs. Lang, would you like to give us a campaign speech?
Not at this time, thank you, though.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have remaining on the agenda to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for the housing authority. Please note that we've had an opening ceremony and a roll call, all are present. We have the minutes from January 7, 2014. Is there any discussion or motion?
Move the approval of the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have communications or reports from the executive?
Neither, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. We have election for a new chairperson for 2014.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the nomination of Steve Buehler to be chair for year 2014 by acclamation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? And call for a roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. We now have election for a vice-chair.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve Tom Hune to be our vice-chair for the housing authority year 2014 by acclamation.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Thank you. We now come to motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. We have a regular meeting municipal building authority tonight, and we have a call to order opening ceremony. The council member Cory Rushden, we're done, and roll call, everybody on the dice. And number four, the item approval of minutes, January 7, 2014, so I need a motion for that.
I move for approval of the minutes of January 7, 2014.
So, I have the motion, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes unanimously. Any communication, Mr. Pyle?
No, or report either, sir. Thank you.
No, thank you. Number item seven, new business. Number eight, we have a business here, we need to elect a chairman for 2014. So, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we elect Lars Nordfeld to be the chairman of the building authority year 2014 by acclamation.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? None. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. The item number seven B, we need the motion to elect a vice-chairperson for 2014.
Mr. Chair, I move that we elect Steve Vincent, vice-chair of the building authority for 2014 by acclamation.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion for this business? Item number seven B? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. And we have a last item, it's adjourned, so I need a motion for adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Thank you. We adjourn.